2017 Updaten Election Forum. Thank you for being here. How many folks had a chance to join us on Saturday for the longest table? Yeah, awesome. Thank you for being there. My name is A.J. Ferguson. I direct Updaten and try to support our hundreds of volunteers who make all this stuff happen. So if you see any of our team around today, please say thank you for their volunteer work. Our facilitator, our advocacy chair David, put all this on their own time. So say thank you to them. A few housekeeping things. There is food and drinks, so make sure to help yourself. 100% okay to get up and get refills. Our break in the middle is going to be real quick, so just get up and help yourself anytime. Restrooms are out the doors you came through and to the left. And then if you want to submit a question tonight, it's going to be very difficult to get it in, but we do have a way for you to do so. On my next slide, so this link will be up there all night, updaten.socialqa.com. You can vote for other questions that you really like, or you can type in one of your own and hope that everybody else likes it and votes it up. We'll do as many of those as we can. All right, with that, I want to introduce the Updaten advocacy chair, David Young.
Hello. I would like to welcome you all here on behalf of the Updaten Board of Directors. My name is David Young. I'm the advocacy committee chair. I first want to start by, A.J. stole my thunder, and thanks to my team and Atana Jacoby, who was our facilitator. I want to thank them all. They did a great job helping us. I'd also like to thank Dayton Daily News, which is one of our partners, as well as YWCA. They were great partners in helping us put this on, as well as the Dayton Metro Library for letting us use their awesome facility. We do ask that all candidates and audience members remain respectful of all eight candidates during this event. These candidates have put in a lot of hard work to be on the ballot and to be here this evening, so we want to ensure that they all receive the same respect. We are excited that you've joined us this evening as we hear from these candidates for Dayton Public Schools Board of Education. We purposely have chosen a new format this year so that the candidates engage with each other in a more deliberative discussion, because when they're elected, they will have to engage with their peers in deliberative fashion on the board. I'd also like to share that we have a literature table up here by the front door. All the candidates and then other candidates have left their literature there as well, so you can find that. We are proud to say that we endorsed the Human Services Levy Issue III, and they will be welcome to talk to you up there as well. Without further ado, I would like to present to you our facilitator. Her name is Atana Jacoby. Atana Jacoby serves as manager of the Hall Hunger Initiative. Previously, she worked on the program staffs of the Kettering Foundation and National Issues Forums, where she received, or where she researched the impacts of robust language arts in Boston Public Schools, was national training director at the Roosevelt Institute, and was the Harry A. Wachtel Leadership Scholar of Hofstra University Center for Civic Engagement. Jacoby currently serves as treasurer of the Greater Dayton Union Co-op Initiatives Board and sits on Hofstra University's Center for Civic Engagement Board, as well as the Calico School of Government, Public Policy, and International Affairs, external advisory board. She is an active member of the Dayton community and volunteers regularly with several local organizations and initiatives, including the Gem City Market, Updaten, YWCA, Professionals United for Sexual Health, PUSH, and the Hearth Pantry. Jacoby graduated summa cum laude with a BA in Political Science and Global Studies from Hofstra University, honors college, and is a member of the Phi Beta Kappa. And now I will introduce our first four candidates. And due to the amount of candidates, we will not be introducing them by their bios. You can find that in the form that was left at the front table. Our first candidate is Mohammed Al Hamdani. Our second candidate is Anne Marie, also known as Mario Gallin. Our third candidate is Jocelyn Reinert. Our fourth candidate is Karen Wick-Gagné.
Thank you, David. As David mentioned, due to the deliberative nature of the school board, we believe at Updaten that it's important for voters to see how candidates can engage with each other in a respectful manner while discussing important and contentious issues. As such, this evening's format will provide an opportunity for candidates to engage with each other while answering the prepared questions. The group will have five minutes to discuss each question as a collective, and we will ask that the candidates keep their responses to 30 seconds per comment to allow for more dialogue amongst the group. As facilitator, I will use my discretion and do my best to ensure the conversation is fair and balanced among the candidates. In addition to the group questions, each candidate will have one individual question that he or she will have two minutes to respond to. Candidates will be given one minute, 30 seconds, and times-up notifications for their individual questions. With that, let's get started. So a few of the questions are sponsored questions, and we're going to start with the Updaten sponsored question. So Updaten seeks to spur economic growth in the Dayton region by attracting and retaining young creative talent and wants to show that young adults, that the Gem City is a great place to live, work, and play. However, many young professionals are buying homes in the suburbs or sending their children to private or charter schools because they're concerned about the quality of Dayton Public Schools. What do you believe is the biggest reason for their fear of sending their children to Dayton Public Schools? And what can you do as an individual board member to work towards reversing this trend? We'll start with Jocelyn, as is our hand, and then we'll go throughout the group.
Thank you, Atana. Thank you, Updaten, for sponsoring this. I am excited to answer this question, because this is where I was nine years ago when my son was ready for kindergarten. My husband and I moved here 14 years ago, never with the expectation that we would send our kids to DPS. And then we realized that the myths we had been told about DPS were myths, that the words "good schools" and "bad schools" were labels for communities with high levels of poverty and segregation. My favorite part about campaigning has been the opportunity to catch people and say, "You have a young child. What are you going to do when your child is ready to go to school?" And say, "Listen, there's some amazing things going on in Dayton Public Schools. Let me tell you about them." As a board member, I'm so excited to have the parent's perspective and be able to say, "How can we pull in more people, more young people? We have a whole bunch of young people who have moved into Dayton the last couple of years. Maybe they've started having kids, or they'll have kids in a couple of years, and I hope that we can catch them and attract them so they don't move out to the suburbs. We need to catch them while they're here."
Thank you, Mohammed.
Well, I mean, we've got to realize that things are not that great in Dayton Public Schools right now. This is a number you all should remember, 607. We're ranked 607 out of 600 different school systems in the state. It's hard for me to imagine being a parent that has to make that choice. It's hard. Parents want to send their kids to quality schools. The best thing we can do is elect four individuals that can work as a team to get this thing turned around. And we have to start putting personal agendas and personal egos aside and work together with our community partners, with our school teachers, with our parents, and get them more involved with us. We have to start realizing things aren't great for some of our schools. Some schools are doing great. There are 200, you know, like I said, there are 23,000 kids that live in Dayton. Only 13,000 of them go to Dayton Public Schools right now for a reason. And that's because parents got tired over time of failed school after failed school after failed school grading. We have to turn this thing around. Our kids deserve better. We can do better.
Thank you, Mario.
I'm in the middle of these two answers, and I agree with both of them. I think that there are schools where parents are actively choosing to send their children. I believe that those parents are doing their research. They are interested in a diverse opportunity for their children. They don't necessarily want the homogenousness of the suburbs. On the other hand, we have a lot of schools that haven't reached that effect yet.
That's right.
And part of what we need to do, and as a board member, what I would do, is start moving out what's working in successful schools into other schools. But it also involves showing teachers how they can be more successful. I think a lot of teachers are beaten down by the day-to-day changes that occur in Ludlow Street and by, you know, people being adversarial towards their work. And so a lot of it is going to start to be getting teachers to understand what can work and give them the tools to make it happen.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, I... Is this on? Yeah. I agree with everything everybody said. I think Dayton is poised for, is experiencing great growth. I think that we're all poised for wonderful opportunity. I think the one thing that's missing within Dayton right now is our schools. I believe that we have some great schools, and I believe we're missing a lot of opportunities. For me personally, I'm a relationship person. I believe that we have to start at the very top, making better choices about forging relationships. I think that our relationships with our teachers, our relationships with our community, our relationships with our, with everybody as a whole, we need to address that. I think we can build better schools. I think that we have wonderful models that we can use, and we can apply that to the underperforming schools, and I think we can achieve great opportunity. I think that the power in building good relationships with our community and our business leaders is in people working together. I believe that a house is going to be divided and will be broken down if we don't have a team working together. That's why I'm running with a team, and my team and our team can move this organization forward.
Thank you, Karen. Just to note, I know that we're transitioning into a different kind of format. If we want to have more dialogue, if we can keep our responses to 30 seconds, it'll allow for more engagement. Instead of one response, you could have two responses or potentially three. Building off of the statistics that Mohammed raised, Dayton narrowly avoided a state takeover recently due to low test scores. What specific actions would you take to improve test scores specifically across the district to ensure local control of our schools?
Well, you know, the board is really responsible for two things. We're responsible to hire a superintendent and a treasurer to run the district. Board members, the biggest issue that I've seen with Dayton Public School for a long time is our board members have been micromanaging the day-to-day operations in Dayton Public Schools. We can set policies in place, but we can't act like the professionals and start doing the work for our teachers and getting into school buildings and taking over for our administrators. We have to give them the breathing room they need to do their job. That's the best thing we can do, and we need a team that understands that.
Thank you. Jocelyn.
I think it's interesting. I believe I bring an interesting perspective, because I go to a lot of board meetings and I see the things that they talk about. One thing that I'm looking forward to seeing the results of is Dr. Lali has implemented a very strong teacher coaching program. She believes very strongly that it's worked in other districts. I've seen her advocate for it, and I'm really looking forward to her reporting on the results. One thing that I want to do as a board member is make sure that when we implement policy, that we implement it correctly and that we track it and we report on it. Because we can't implement policies and then expect them to work if we're not evaluating them and seeing if they're right. And I've been very glad to see that in all the school board meetings that I go to.
Karen.
I think that we have to work on doing more preventative work than intervention. I think third grade reading level is critical. I think that if we work with some of these initiatives to catch our, to not let our children lag behind, if we can get them by the time they're in third grade and we can get them reading at a third grade reading level, we stand to face a lot of those challenges and meet those opportunities. I think that a lot of what stands in the way of a child being effectively educated are emotional issues. The reality of our student population within Dayton Public Schools is that we have some systemic poverty issues, some lack of education issues, and that if we can provide some of the emotional components and bridge some of those gaps, we can begin to increase those numbers.
Mario, did you want to jump in before Jocelyn?
There are so many different factors that go into educating a child that's grown up in poverty and crisis. And until we start to address that, and, you know, whether that's considered micromanaging from the community or not, I don't know. But my experience has shown that the way we're implementing education in the classroom is not effective, because we're not taking caution to learn about brain development in children from birth through age five. The impact that crisis and poverty has on that with cortisol levels and adrenaline and it just, it impacts how they can learn. So until we start to address how we can effectively implement education in the classroom, we're going to be seeing the results we always see.
Before I hear your responses to that, I'm wondering specifically, so all of you've kind of spoken around test scores, but we are facing a state takeover specifically because of test scores. So if your responses could address that. I saw Jocelyn and then Mohammed.
Sure.
Sure. The Dr. Lali's program of the teacher training coaching program should see some changes in test scores, and I look forward to seeing that. We did have an eight-point jump last year in the third grade reading scores, and I don't know if they've come out and said what they believe is the reason for that jump. I'm hopeful about it, and I think we can see if the teacher coaching program is successful. We will see the results.
Thank you, Mohammed.
I respectfully disagree. You know, this board and our school district has had an A before that went to an F the next year, because they take their eyes off the ball all the time. I mean, that's a problem with what's going on in our school district. You know, they'll set their vision on one thing and forget that there are multiple issues. And Mario just hit the nail on the head. You know, from birth till age five, well, we don't even see those kids. By the time they come to us, they're already behind. You have to start addressing those. Now, for test scores, we have to start being laser-focused on the issues that matter. Attendance is something that needs to go up. We're one of the lowest attendance rates in the state. That needs to change, third grade reading levels. If they're not reading in third grade, they can't pass their test. And our graduation rates are the lowest in the state, and that's because their third grade reading levels and they're not attending schools are already far behind. So until we fix those two things, our test scores won't go up. We have to start doing more prevention. We have to make sure our kids are reading at a third grade level before they get to third grade and not wait for them to fall behind for us to address the issues.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we're going to transition out, but we're actually going to build on some of the comments that Mario just said about trauma. So conversations about accountability tend to center on how teachers and districts can improve test scores, as we just were discussing, and graduation rates, despite the relationship between academic achievement and strong mental and physical health support systems. As such, accountability discussions do not often address our responsibility to ensure the emotional and psychological well-being of our students. What would you do to facilitate a more holistic notion of accountability that would meet the needs of students who have experienced or are experiencing trauma? Let's start with Karen.
Oh, I love this. This is my favorite. You know, I'm a mother of two DPS grads. Both attended Stivers. Were fortunate enough to attend Stivers School for the Arts, one of those models within our community that we can certainly all look at and be proud of. I believe one of the drivers of Stivers' success is that because of the art. And art is in everything we do. It's in our science. It's in our math. It's in the way we relate with one another. Art is life. We are art every day. But I believe that these young people, we've engaged them through their art, through tapping into their own individual talents that they, that then they can express themselves. When you can inspire somebody to be an individual, to be free, to be an individual, you can engage them to learn. They can learn the math. They can read. They can pass the test. We just need to continue to do work to inspire them. We need to fill those emotional gaps. We need to have guidance counselors, not just academic guidance counselors in every building, but we need to have emotional guidance counselors in every building. When I was growing up, we had a guidance counselor that, you know, we weren't putting college, college, college in front of every kid, because further academic is not for everybody. We need workforce development. There are skills and trades out there that certainly people can go on and live a successful life. But if we can work with the individual and the spirit within each one of our people, our young people, I'm confident we can be successful.
Thank you.
Karen touched on something that is of deep importance to me as well. In the DEA negotiations, contract negotiations last August, I was part of a parent group. I formed a parent group that mobilized hundreds of parents over the district to come together and support the DEA. And one of the things that we were supporting the DEA in their request was school counselors in every single school. Another thing, as a parent, I go to school at my kid's school, and the media center, the library, is closed. There is no media center staff, so kids cannot go in and can, they can't check out books, and they can't engage with books the way that they should be, the way that teaches them to read and will bring those grades up. And they also ask for increased ESL resources. I'm really troubled by the fact that we don't have school counselors and staff media centers and more ESL resources. I think that that will go a long way in meeting the emotional needs of the children, as well as the reading needs, the literacy needs.
Thank you.
We currently in Dayton Public Schools have contracts with, I think, two or three mental health providers that have onsite counselors for kids at least several days a week. So in that respect, we are hitting some of the issues that children face. I will say that sometimes it's hard to get parents to come in and want to do this, even though it's at no cost to them. We need to, I think, put back our restorative justice program. We had one that was pretty successful and got dismantled for several different reasons. But I think it's something that we need to look at again. Putting kids out is not the answer, and allowing them to be disruptive in class is not the answer. So we have to find a way to reach these kids so that they can go back to the classroom and learn, and then test scores will come up. It's kind of a rising tide philosophy.
Thank you, Mohammed.
So your question was around mental health.
Trauma.
And trauma. And I think that hits on the fact that we are the epicenter for the epidemic as well. So that's something we have to remember in Dayton. I would like to see, not just with counselors, and Karen and I have had great discussions in our team, I'd like to see mental health institutions be in every building. We need to have providers. And one of the models that we're always pushing out on the trail is to have public-private partnerships, where we have providers, healthcare providers, dental, vision, and mental health providers inside our schools. One of the biggest assets Dayton Public School has is our newer buildings, and we're not using them effectively. And we can use some of those partnerships to make sure that those services are provided. I also want to support our teachers, who recognize that some of us come with issues. Mr. Malone is sitting up front. I remember, he's the only man that's seen me cry probably in this building when I had a mental health breakdown of Colonel White High School. And I remember him coming up to me and asking me, "What's wrong? What can I do?" And he gave me a hug, and that made my day. Thank you for that. I still remember that.
Thank you. So moving on to staffing, Jocelyn raised some of the staffing concerns that came up with the DEA. So staffing still remains one of the key issues left largely unresolved in the new DEA contract. Despite an increased focus on literacy in the district, most libraries still remain closed due to a lack of media specialists on the DPS staff. With a large number of immigrant students in the district, there is a need for increased English as a second language teachers. And we still see a dearth of counselors in our district, particularly when we take into consideration the high levels of trauma many of our students experience on a regular basis. Given budgetary limitations and competing priorities the board must deal with, it will be difficult to address all of these simultaneously. Therefore, which of these three staffing priorities is most important to you and why?
Can you re-list those, please?
Sure. The first is media specialists, the second is ESL teachers, and the third is counselors.
I'd like to go with ESL teachers. We have a high population of immigrant families at Ruskin, which is where I'm located right now. And our ESL director is still on a teacher contract. She's not an administrator, so at the end of May, she's gone for the summer, and she comes back with other teachers a few days before school starts. We have, I think, over 800 students who receive services for ESL. We need somebody to put a focus on that. The second thing would be, the media centers are important, but I know currently our media center is host to three intervention teachers. So opening up the media center where I am is, would be problematic at best. So can we partner with the libraries? Can we use Bookmobile? Can we find other ways to have books available to children so that we can utilize all the space in the school for all the programs we have for them?
So ESL is most important to you?
I think it would have the biggest impact right now.
Thank you.
I would have to agree with her on what would have the biggest impact. You know, when my family arrived here, I was 10 years old. I didn't speak English. And if it wasn't for the great ESL program at Dayton Public Schools, I wouldn't be where I am today. You know, that was very important back in the day. We actually had ESL programs specific to every region, and I went to Miami Chapel, Fairview Middle, and Colonel White High School, because those were the ESL schools. And I got a lot out of it, and it was great back then, and I don't know why we got away with that model. Now, the other two, I think, models, we could probably use public-private partnerships for those a little bit better. And it's hard to find ESL public-private partnerships.
Okay. Thank you. Jocelyn?
I think it's a very close call. I absolutely see the need for ESL resources in our schools. But, you know, school counselors, we talk about trauma all the time, and we have to talk about those kids in our schools that are traumatized. I don't talk about this very much, but I have a family member who is addicted to heroin, and I worry about the children that are coming up and are going to need those trauma resources. And I can't discount that. It's like trying to pick a favorite child.
I don't think that you can make a choice. I think they're all critical issues, and I think whatever board members you elect, they should all be priorities. I think that a reorganization of resources is in need to address these critical issues that are affecting our children. So, you know, if we have to look at a budget and reorganize and address these as three top issues that are driving performance, then that's what it's going to take. I think that cuts can be made elsewhere in order to facilitate these issues that are affecting our kids.
Which of those three would you choose first?
I mean, ESL. I think that the organization of our ESL kids is a program that we need to take in-depth look at. I think that the ESL kids need to be organized into one building. I think that, you know, that will require some transportation issues and some logistic issues that we have to take a look at, but I think that there are efficiencies that can be created as a result of having them in one building. I think that when you have guidance counselors, that, you know, we have two guidance counselors that are visiting five buildings, and when we talk about that relationship piece, as stable as we can keep people within their communities and building on those relationships, we're going to be more successful. So I think that the counseling and the ESL go right hand-in-hand with me as the top two, so.
So counseling and ESL, but also I'm hearing a concentration of students that speak English as a second language.
Well, that's what they did back in the day. Like, we went to, you know, Miami Chapel Elementary when you spoke, if English was a second language, you went to Miami Chapel Elementary, then you went to Fairview Middle, and then Colonel White High School. And then that way, you knew where the ESL programs and all the specialists were, and made things a lot simpler for all of us. And we were all there together to learn English as a second language. It was much simpler for us.
I know there's been talk recently about opening up a special, like a welcomeer school, where all the students who require ESL services start. And I think the concern that people have voiced, and I agree, is, do you stay there forever? I mean, one of the things that I think makes the ESL programs that we have successful is they are immersed in an English-language setting, and they do pull out classes. And some children come to us with limited English. Some children are truly, like Mohammed, two words and a lifetime of trauma prior to arriving in America and require more intensive intervention. But I would be loath to say that all, if we have 800 kids, then we can't put them all in an elementary school.
And that's not what we're saying. I think, you know, what we're saying is, you have specific schools that specialize in ESL. I don't like the whole one-school model at all. I think that takes kids, and I mean, that's what I liked about the model they had. I mean, I went to ESL for a couple of classes, but I was also integrated with other classmates, and I was integrated for the other classes. But it did help the district back then to have specific ESL teachers in the building. Some of our buildings today, we're putting kids with teachers that have no idea how to teach English as a second language in some of our buildings. That doesn't happen in all our buildings, but, I mean, we just had kids that were put in Belmont that should have been going to Dunbar, for example, where, you know, the busing was an issue for them. They were Sudanese students that lived closer to Dunbar, and they were sent to Meadowdale, and Meadowdale did not know how to deal with them. And we had to intervene to get them over to Dunbar. It happens all the time. You know this.
Jocelyn, do you have any thoughts on this before we transition onto the next question?
I do. I disagree with the fact that you think we can have things both ways, Mohammed. Earlier, you said that you'd like to have schools that are for the ESL students, and then you said you'd like to have schools that have the ESL resources. You know, we have a lot of schools that have ESL resources now. I worry, and I think we need to have a conversation about, are we making the ESL students separate but equal? I like the idea of integrating them with children. I think kids can learn English better if they're immersed. When my children's school accepted the ESL students, I was overjoyed to see the excitement and love in the teachers' faces. They were thrilled to get the ESL students. You can't have a school where all the ESL kids have their resources, but then have them integrated.
We're going to transition into some individual questions. So when I ask this question, it's for one particular candidate. You'll have two minutes to respond to that question. Laura has some time notes just to be aware of. So the first question is to you, Mario. You mentioned that in your candidate information that you sent to us beforehand, you mentioned that one of your first projects, if you're elected, would be to look into how other districts are able to pay teachers $7,000 to $10,000 more than DPS. Would you be willing to support a levy to increase the district's budget to increase these salaries? If not, where would that money be coming from?
I think having a levy would be last on my list. I do think that we need to look harder at, I mean, I do know of teachers that have left. It used to be that teachers would stay in DPS because of their salary schedule, they wouldn't be able to match it in another district. That's gone away. Our teachers are recruited now by other districts, and they will match their salary schedule, and they will match the money that they're making here. So, the conversation a couple of weeks ago was, you know, we have a $500 million budget for 13,000 students. What are we doing? I mean, I've been away from active board membership for 10 years, so I've kept my finger kind of on the pulse of the finances, so I know we're not broke. But really, as a board member, my first job would be to go in and look at line items and have them justified and see where we're going. I will say that we can, having been in a school for the last eight years, the waste that goes on with materials and resources is stunning. And if we direct the superintendent to take a stronger look at that, then I think that we could gather, you know, some money back into the budget. But I am interested, how does West Carrollton get to pay more for their student, for their teachers, than we're able to accommodate here? What's the dynamic? What are they doing that we're not? And I would be exploring that.
So, exploring other, this is just for her, exploring others, but it does sound like if all else fails, you would potentially support a levy, but that would be a last resort measure?
I think it would be, we need to explore other options first, but I do believe that our teachers need to be paid better. They need to have better opportunities and resources, and whether it's, you know, we help pay for grad school, or whether, you know, we provide the principals, licensures, I don't know what the answer is. It would depend on what teachers, you know, through the union indicate that their concerns are, but certainly a salary increase we can justify.
Thank you. This question is for Jocelyn. You've previously noted that you are hopeful the school board can address some of the key reasons for authorizing a strike, including the needs of school counselors, media center staff, and English as a second language resource. What specific actions would you take as a school board member to address these challenges? And do those include advocating for a new levy as well to pay for these additional expenditures?
That's a good question. It's a tough question, too. I do know that in August, when the contract negotiations were at the very most critical point, that they ended up with a two-year contract instead of a three-year contract. And that's because the DPS could not find the resources to meet the demands of the DEA and still have a three-year contract instead of a two-year contract. I think that there's been a lot of talk the last couple of years about having another levy. I know that there was another levy in the works a few years ago that was derailed by some other plans. I think we need to have an honest conversation about, you know, we have a two-year contract. So, when I'm on the board in two years, we're going to have to look at the budget, and we're going to have to renegotiate, not with just with the DEA, but with all the other bargaining units. It's a big concern of mine. I do think that we have to look at it. I don't know whether we're going to or not, but things are going to come a lot sooner than they would have if the DEA would have had a normal three-year contract. There are some things that I do think are important and that the DEA was asking for that, as a parent of four kids in DPS, I think are critically important for the kids to have. You know, we really do need to have the teacher, the competitive teacher pay. There was a four-year pay-step freeze of the teachers the last couple of years. I talked to my second grade daughter's teacher, and she said that if she had started out in a different district and kept on teaching for, I think she's been teaching for 26 years, I might have that number slightly wrong, she would be earning $30,000 more. The teachers in Dayton, I see the work that they do. I see the love that they have for Dayton's kids. For many of them, it's a calling, and we have to make sure that even though it's a calling and they are committed to the area, just like I'm committed to staying here. My husband and I chose to stay here, stay here. But we need to make sure that they're given the proper resources and that we compensate them.
So, am I hearing, similar to Mario, that it's not necessarily something you're going to advocate for, but it's on the table if you're a school board member?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mohammed and Karen, neither of your questions have to do specifically with levies, but given that your two colleagues just answered questions, do either of you want to very briefly state whether or not you would support a levy?
If it's specific for teacher, to fundraise for teacher pay, and the teachers, and I'm looking at Jeff Mims here, because he was the last man to get a levy passed to help pay for teacher raises, then that's something I would consider yes. But if it's for other things, no. Not when we're at 607, not when the community doesn't support everything we're doing. We have to get the community behind it first, and that will take time.
So, a levy for teacher salaries, something you could consider?
If the teachers are behind it, yes. If the teachers will support that, then yes, I will support it. But if the teachers say they're not going to support that, then I think we put that on the table on another day.
Karen?
I'm in agreement with Mohammed. I've lived in the city of Dayton for 40 years now. I'm a business owner. I love this community. These children, these schools are our future. As goes a school, as goes a city, so goes a public school. Our property values will, the better our schools get, the better our property values will be. As I said earlier, Dayton is on the verge of some wonderful growth downtown. We're seeing condos and, you know, people moving downtown. Our tax base will increase. I think it's something that a board is going to have to take a good, hard look at. I think that it's important that the board is going to have to build trust. The board is going to have to stabilize the organization.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Karen. Just really quickly, on the levy, where do you stand?
I support teacher working conditions, and if it's in need, I would support a levy.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to wrap up the individual questions, so there are two more remaining. This one is for you, Mohammed. Dayton Daily News recently reported that you said the four members of your slate would not show disagreement in public, doing more preparation behind closed doors. Why do you believe disagreeing with your colleagues in public should be avoided, and how do you reconcile the desire to have a united front with the need to adhere to Ohio Sunshine laws and the spirit of those laws regarding openness in government?
Well, I think that was kind of me going a little bit misquoted at the time. What I was trying to say is, we can't have a board member walk out of a board meeting like they did the other day. That's something that should be unacceptable. I see you holding, I know what you mean there. What I was trying to say is, we need to do more prepared work behind closed doors, because right now, I don't know if you guys know this, but the agenda for the board meeting literally happens an hour or two before the board meetings, and we have board members showing up unprepared. That's unacceptable for me. I can't be unprepared and show up to make decisions on things that are important to our children. We have to make sure that we're all prepared, because if we're going based on information that is just literally presented an hour before, I'm going to a meeting, a public meeting, that makes us all look bad. Look, we all see the spectacles that's happening at Dayton Public Schools. We need a team that can work together, a team that can put personal egos aside and personal agendas and move us forward, a team that can focus on the vision, focus on a plan, that we can move this district together. There are, everybody's here talking about, "I can do, I can do." There are seven members of the school board, seven. We've been electing all seven of them separately every year, and look where that has gotten us, 607. We can do better. We have to do better for our children. What I'm talking about, working with a team, working as a slate, what I'm talking about is, we have to start working to put those personal agendas and personal projects and really focus on a plan, a plan that's brought together by our teachers, by our community, by our leaders, and by everyone who is involved, and that includes everyone in this room.
Do you feel comfortable disagreeing with other members of your slate? Should you all be?
You can ask Reverend about that. He's trying to convert me every day. I disagree with him about that every other day. So...
On matters of contentious issues?
Of course we have, and we have those discussions regularly. But I think in public, I would love for us, once we, you know, once we're on the public, is to present those discussions in a professional manner. That's what I was trying to say. We have to show disagreement, like we're showing disagreement today, in a professional manner, and not walk out on school boards and throw tantrums on our school meetings. That's not something we should have. We set the example for our children, and our children watch that. They see that. They see us taking shots at each other at a school board meeting. It sends a wrong message to our administration, it sends a wrong message to our teachers, and it sends the wrong message to our children.
Thank you. And Karen, the last one is for you. You've been a strong supporter of Stivers and have spoken about your involvement and supported the school throughout the campaign. However, Stivers often is touted as the crown jewel of the district and is a very unique school, and your knowledge and experience might not directly translate to an understanding of the struggles many other DPS schools face. What evidence can you point to for voters that demonstrates your understanding of the wide range of different challenges faced by other schools in the district?
Well, I think that you can use the Stivers model as a crown jewel. I think that the community is still the same. We service kids from all over the community because it is a school that you auditioned for, maybe separates it a little bit, but I think that Stivers certainly provides a broad example of the challenges that our schools deal with within a community. One of my favorite quotes of our principal and very good leader, Erin Dooley, "Life is not free." She will tell those students around there, "If you want to do something, you pick up that bottle of water, you do the work." And I think that that simple principle can be applied across our district. We have the same issues within Stivers that any Dayton public school is dealing with. So, I think that my experience within the community, not only working with Stivers, my kids went to Horace Mann, certainly shows our whole community. My children, who both graduated from DPS, are well-rounded human beings as a result of being exposed to Dayton Public Schools and giving them a real-world experience as to what really exists, the challenges, the struggles, the very real struggles that our community is faced with. So, I think that I have a good idea of what's going on.
Thank you. So, we're going to go back to a couple of group questions before we wrap up. This is the YWCA-sponsored question, which is one of our co-sponsors for the evening. According to DPS disciplinary data, 102 children in grades K-3 through 3 were suspended from school in just the first quarter of the 2016-2017 school year. We also know that at DPS, students of color are suspended at a disproportionate rate compared to other students. Experts say no research indicates that elementary suspensions improve a child's behavior or make school safer, but many studies have shown that suspended students are more prone to avoiding school, having lower grades, and ultimately dropping out of school, which limits their career prospects and can lead to a lifetime of poverty. Discipline that pushes kids out of school can also result in mistrust of adults and an increased risk of being involved with the juvenile justice system. As a prospective school board member, what do you think about the DPS disciplinary policy that has resulted in the suspension of children under the age of 10? And what would you change about this policy, if anything?
Get rid of it. You can't have it.
Right. If you go, I mean, there are no children, no babies between the ages of pre-kindergarten and third grade that want to act out. If a child is acting out so severely that they are getting expelled, there's an emotional issue there. There is an emotional condition that we as a community, that we as a Board of Education, that we as a community of Dayton have a responsibility to address. We need to make sure that that baby is getting taken care of, and no suspension is going to take care of the issue. It's only going to be compounded by actions such as that. So, I agree with Mohammed, you get rid of it. We have to look at those issues deeply and deal with our student issues effectively.
And I think this speaks to the need of having counselors in school who can facilitate the teachers and give them the tools and maybe pull the kids out. So, I'm a parent, again, I have four kids in Dayton Public Schools, I'm not an educator, but one of my jobs is to oversee policy and to make sure that we have a superintendent that makes sure that we have the right resources in the class, in the schools, and that we are attending to their needs and making sure that we don't have that number of suspensions and expulsions. I think that's a shame.
Do you also think that we should get rid of that policy to ensure that those students are not being suspended?
I would like to have an educator make that decision, and I will support them in that.
Mario?
The speaker who was at the preschool promise summit last spring, and also an author of a book that, I guess, it was a consultant that was brought in by DPS, Dr. Jackson, both speak to the idea that when kids are suspended at a young age, it's really because the teacher has a problem. It's, you know, disrespect should not be a suspensionable effect. "I'm not doing my work," should not call for suspension. So, I think that we need to change how we look at the issues that cause suspension, and also, but I don't want to take away 100% the ability of an administrator to make a decision based on the safety of the children around them. So, it is a broader conversation, and I think it does need to have educators in the room when it happens.
This issue hurts young black men than anybody else. Period. Majority of them that were suspended were young black boys. And the reality is, is we're not providing the resources or the training for our teachers to deal with some of the issues that are coming into our, and we've all talked about being in an urban environment, right? Being an urban school comes with a set of challenges, and we have to be prepared as a school system to address those challenges. Right now, we're not. It's because we haven't trained our teachers to handle some of the issues that we're seeing out of the community. We have to get more community partners involved, and we, as a community, have to get behind these kids and show them a better way. I was invested into, and I was given a better way, and I made something of myself. But that's not happening for every child in Dayton, and that needs to change. We can't be suspended babies. We just can't. We're just sending them out there to do what?
I'd like us to dig into this a little bit more. So, according to the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio's new report, "The State of Black Dayton," over the last three school years, African-American males have accounted for roughly half of all suspensions while only representing a third of the student population. Between 2014 and 2016, district students were most often suspended for one subjective infraction, disruptive and disobedient behaviors. Overwhelmingly, black males were suspended for this and other culturally-based infractions. At the town hall meeting discussing this report last week, implicit bias was raised as a concern that must be addressed. Do you agree, and what steps, if any, do you believe DPS should take to reduce the number of suspensions and close the discipline gaps, specifically as it relates to implicit bias?
I think we have to have more teacher training. We have to, I mean, what you're saying is true, there is implicit bias in all of us. And that's something that, as a district, as human beings, we all have to recognize that we come with our own set of biases. And if we can't recognize that, then we're failing our kids. And we have to provide the training for our teachers to recognize that, and then apply the right policies, and make sure that they have all the resources that they need to make sure the kids are taken care of.
Others?
I would like to specifically say that one thing that I know the teachers were upset about in the latest round of contract negotiations is the reduction of teacher planning time. If the teachers don't have the proper time for planning, you know, your whole day can be thrown off. And I want to make sure that we're listening to the teachers and giving them the resources that they're asking for. I see in a lot of my PTO group meetings, teachers saying, "We've been given these things, and we don't need them. We know what we need, and we will ask for them." And I think we need to have some flexibility. We need to ask the teachers, "What is it that you need, whether it's resources, whether it's planning time, or whether it's more training, and we will try to provide that for you?"
So, will you only provide implicit bias training to teachers to address the discipline gap that they ask for it?
No. I think that's, thank you for asking that. Absolutely not.
Oh, it's good to hear.
Yeah. But we also need to be cognizant of, sometimes there are things that we miss, and we need to be open to listening to them and saying, "Listen, we're getting this implicit bias training. This is valuable, but there's this other training that has, you know, there are studies happening all the time." And we need to make sure that we have that flexibility and that we don't get caught in a rut. I think we have been caught in a rut where we say, "This is what we need," and we go along for five years, and then we're behind.
Would you prioritize implicit bias training over other trainings that the educators are asking for?
Well, I don't think I have the answer, because I don't know specifically what the other things are asking for, but I absolutely agree that we need more implicit bias training. The numbers that we had from last year absolutely 100% back that up.
Mario?
Yeah, I agree, and I think that the hardest part is to have the conversation, because it is hard to sit there and say, "Oh, by the way, I might not be completely open to your experience. I might not fully understand where you're coming from." And until we can have those honest conversations with each other, we're not going to be making any changes. It is the hardest thing in the world, and we see this on all stages now, to actually acknowledge that what we believe in may not be actually the truth. It may not actually be what other people's experiences are, and we don't want to hear it. I do not want to hear that other people have not been treated fairly. I don't want to hear that, you know, people live in fear of their lives. But until I acknowledge that that is their reality, we got nothing. So it's important that we get teachers engaged in this. And I do think, while I believe that we should be ground up in terms of programs, I think this would be one of the things where we say, "No, we absolutely need to instigate it. You absolutely will participate, and hopefully you'll be able to have a change."
Karen?
I think implicit bias training is something that we could all benefit from, not just our kids, but our whole community. My, my daughter, 21, 22-years-old, educates my husband and I all the time. She's an Antioch College student, and they are deeply rooted in social justice issues. And she is, all the time, the, the little actions that we make or the little comments that we make, that I, I think I'm not a biased person. I'm not prejudiced, but I, I, I say some wrong things sometimes. Not knowingly, but I do. And I, but I think that the cumulative effect of all of us not having the proper training with regard to how some of these young men and some of these young women feel is creating more of an issue. So I think even a curriculum model that addresses these issues could go a long way, not only for these young kids, but for, for us all, for us as a community, for us as, for, for all of us.
So am I hearing support for teachers as well as other community members?
Absolutely, the whole community, everybody.
And just to clarify, is this for teachers and administrators, or just teachers?
Both, for me.
Everybody.
Everybody. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go to one of the social QA questions that's come from the audience and been voted up to the top. It says, "I'm a young teacher. Convince me that I can build a successful, long career at DPS."
I want to say that there's opportunity here. We want to hear, you know, the, the world and education is an ever-changing place. Our young people today, they are rooted in the ideas that are going to change the world and have a positive impact on us. I think that opportunity, I think that everybody wants to be successful. And I think that within Dayton, we're clearly starting at a, at a, at a bottom point. And I think we can go up from here and to play a part in building an organization, in building a model that people can say, "Hey, have you heard what Dayton Public Schools is doing? Have you seen what Dayton Public Schools is doing?" And to be a part of that change could be a very exciting opportunity.
So I, first of all, whoever that teacher is, welcome. I'm so grateful to have you. I hope I get to know you. You know, there was an article written in the Dayton Daily News yesterday, and there was a very interesting quote by one of my fellow candidates, Paul Bradley, that I really disagree with, and it made me angry, and I know it made other people angry too, where he said he wanted to send his kids, when he, if he has kids, he's engaged now, and he would like to send them to DPS. But, forgive me, I don't have the correct quote. But that, that there's no model for success, or no road to success in DPS right now. I disagree with that so much. We have people on this stage who have gone to DPS. I don't think that you can say that there's no model for success. I have full confidence in the new generation of teachers, the passion that they have, and the promise that they see in all of our kids, black and white, and immigrant, and natural-born, and high socioeconomic and low socioeconomic status. I seize the, the path for success in DPS right now. We need to make sure, though, that we are given equity across the district. There are some schools that have more resources than others, and I want to make sure that we build stronger neighborhood schools and that we do give every single child the opportunity.
Thank you.
It can be really discouraging. I remember years ago, teachers would tell me that the advice they would give new teachers was, "Please don't sit in the teacher lounge." Because all the complaining goes on in the teacher lounge, and if that's all you hear, that's all you know. So as for a new teacher to the district, I would say, surround yourself with like-minded people. They are there. Make friends with your administrator. Look at all the best practices that you know of and implement them in your classroom. It is something that I think the Board should really support, is the whole teacher development opportunity. And I think perhaps having mentor teachers, and again, like with Jocelyn, I'm interested in seeing how that's gonna play out. It started out 15 years ago as a program in Detroit and I think Cleveland. We have changed it a little bit for here, where teachers are more focused, the teacher mentors are more focused on data and how to implement instruction based on data. But I would really like to see more coaching and encouragement of young teachers. So surround yourself with like-minded people. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to answer your question directly here. We have one of the toughest school districts to deal with, and it's also the poorest school district in the state. And our teachers are one of the lowest-paid teachers in the state as well. We have to do better when it comes to making sure our teachers are paid at a level that's acceptable for them to make a living wage and be able to be successful here in Dayton. We have to support them financially and emotionally, and that starts with us as a Board. That's why it's important to have candidates who, who can work together to move us forward. Because you saw this with the contract negotiations. You know, the Board was divided, no leadership. They kept dragging their feet, and they made, they gave an example to the community that says, "We don't care about the teachers." And that's not the right way to go.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm actually going to take prerogative, and we want to make sure that we get through your closing statement. So I ask the, this last question that you incorporate into your closing statement, because it's a, it's a short one. "We've heard many values come up throughout this election, including flexibility, innovation, equity, frugality, professionalism, et cetera. What are the top three values you will use to guide your work on the school board?" So I ask that as, as you have your closing statements, that you think about the top three values that you'd like to have drive your, your role in the school board, and we're gonna start with Karen.
Um, top three values? Relationships, community, emotional intelligence. I, I am a firm believer that if we treat the whole individual, that we can create a positive learning environment. I believe that all of our success is driven by relationships. It takes a team. A house divided will fall. I'm running with a slate, because I believe the team approach is the effective method to move forward. You have a great opportunity in November to change the course of Dayton Public Schools. Electing a team would provide a solid foundation to move this organization towards positive growth. I believe in community. I believe in community spirit. I believe in wraparound services within our schools. I believe in our teachers. I believe that the bureaucracy within the school system needs to be cleared up, and we need to listen to our teachers more and allow them to do the job of teaching. And I believe in the city of Dayton. I believe in all of you, and I am humbled to have the opportunity to serve you. So I appreciate your time today and listening to me, and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jocelyn?
Um, my top three values would be communication, accountability, and transparency. I, one of my platform items is that I want to make sure that, just like this is an amazing deliberative discussion, that we can talk to each other and have a, a real conversation. I want to have that all over the city on a regular basis. As a parent who goes to board meetings all the time, I don't feel like we have the opportunity to interact with the Board in this, this kind of manner. I want to make sure that we have accountability, that we implement programs and policy, and we track them, we evaluate them, and we report whether they're, they're successful or not. And I want to have transparency. I want to make sure that the Board is talking about why we're making the decisions that we're making. I feel like, as a parent who decided to run, I decided, you know, I'm, I'm transparent in the reason why I'm running. I wasn't recruited to do this. I see a need in my community. I like to say, "If there's a problem out there, you don't wait for somebody else to fix it. You don't wait for somebody to recruit you and do it. You jump in and do it yourself." And I think I would like to see more transparency.
Is there anything else you'd like to?
This is your closing statement.
Oh, I have one more minute. How exciting. Oh, I apologize. I haven't been looking at you as much as I should have. You know, I think that we, we, we are at the bottom of the state in terms of test scores. I think that's more of an indication that the system is failing than the children. I see, as a parent, I see that there are good things going on, and I bristle at the fact that people say that there aren't any good things going on. I, I think that we need more parents on the Board to say, "Listen, there are things that work." Because if you can't find out what works, then you can't keep what works, and you can't throw out what doesn't work. And so I want to make sure that, you know, when we implement policy, that we have feedback from parents, because they know what's going on.
Thank you. Mario?
This was not my prepared statement. But, you know, each time I go to one of these events, my, my thinking broadens and evolves, and, um... So I think right now, one of my key values is respect, and I think that we could implement that across the Board. We do need respect for each other as Board members. Clearly, you all have heard the conversations and seen the tape. So that's a given. We need respect for our families. It is not okay to berate a family member who's asking questions about their student's education, whether it's on the classroom level, the building administrator, or God help us from the Board. It is, we need, we need to respect our students. It is disheartening to see a teacher lean down over a seven-year-old and talk to them in ways that we would never tolerate. People talking to ourselves, or in fact, our children. So it is, respect is one of the overarching things. And like Mohammed says, it starts at the top. I think that running, you know, electing four people that can work together is very important. But I don't think that it needs necessarily to be four people, the, the slate, sorry. But, um, because I think I do bring value to the Board if I am elected. I have 20 years' experience in the school district. I had children at eight different schools over the course of time. Gardendale, Fairview, two kids at Fairview. One, when I interviewed Fairview, was fabulous. And then when his sister went there, street soldiers, the, the volunteer group were patrolling the hallways. That's how things had come about. I've spent the last eight years in a school, and I have an intimate knowledge of what teachers go through every day and what administrators have to go through. The relationships I developed with my children's teachers and administrators, I still maintain. So I do have contacts throughout the district. My professional development and learning about brain development and, and different teaching styles, I think, would be invaluable. So I have business cards up there, because I am not on the ballot as Mario. I'm on the ballot as Amory Gallin. So take a business card, put it in your wallet, and on Election Day, you'll know who to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario, thank you for your service, by the way, and for, for the eight kids that you put through Dayton Public Schools.
No, eight schools.
Eight schools. Eight kids? See, I think big families, because I come from six kids in my family. Oh, you're the oldest of eight. All right, eight schools. How many kids? Four kids, by God bless you. I only have two. All right. Paul, Karen, and I, we've been running together for six months now. So teamwork is important to us. We work as a team. You need a team that can work together to move us forward. And the big reason for that is because we have to start putting personal agendas and egos aside. Too many of us get on the school board thinking we know what to do, and we don't. We have educators and administrators that do. We get on the school board, and folks start micromanaging. And we should stop that. We can't have micromanagement in our school, in our school Board. We gotta let administrators and teachers teach. So respect is a good one. I like respect. Teamwork and respect is a good one. Respect, not just... I know, I know. I'm working one more. I'm working on my way to my closing statements. Thank you. The other thing is community. Paul, Karen, and I, we go out and we meet with a lot of leaders. And we're talking labor, union labor, we're talking government leaders, talking community, teachers, and we've been endorsed by all of them for a reason. That's because we realize they're not being used adequately. They're not being used the way they should be. Too many folks are trying to partner, partner, partner with Dayton Public School today, and the door's being closed on their face. They reach out to our school buildings, they reach out to our administrators, and they're not getting anywhere with them, and that needs to change. We have to be more open to the community becoming more involved in our schools. And not every school is gonna have a community center that's gonna be able to sponsor them. Ruskin is a good example of a community center that's able to sponsor. But there are a lot of buildings, there are 28 buildings in Dayton, that don't have that luxury, and we have to find other partners for those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize. I thought you were doing a slash, trying to get two in one.
It's all good. Don't worry about it.
Thank you all so much for engaging and trying this unorthodox way of, of getting to know the candidates. Thank you all so much for your time. I don't know what next steps we're gonna take.
Thank you all very much. We're gonna transition here in a sec, so I'll ask all of you to go ahead and step off. While we're transitioning, please give a big thanks to Etana. She worked really hard on, on this evening, so. Two things we want to emphasize real quick. One, our endorsement of the Human Services Levy. The Human Services Renewal Levy, Issue Three, provides critical service for over 50,000 people all over Montgomery County. It protects children from neglect and abuse, helps children and adults with physical disabilities, provides assistance to frail elderly and essential home, to the frail and elderly with essential home care and meals, helps people with mental health and drug addiction issues, and provides immunizations and food inspections. All this and more without raising taxes, taxes. Issue Three is critical to our community. So please, check out their material on your way out. Second, I want to make you very aware that we also have Issue Four on the ballot this year. Citizens for Sinclair in the Room. Issue Four will sustain the quality of current programs and faculty, keep Sinclair's services and facilities up to date, help expand and develop new programs to meet the needs of the workforce, employers, and community, and keep the cost of college education for good jobs affordable. This levy makes up about 20% of Sinclair's budget, and if it is not renewed, Sinclair would have to reduce programs, faculty, and staff. Every levy dollar is used here in Montgomery County. It is a vital investment in our economy and community that won't raise taxes. Issue Four will keep Sinclair strong and won't raise taxes. All right.
Can I offer a comment on that?
I prefer any submissions go through our Q and A, but I apologize.
I'm the one person that's running a campaign to, to ask that we start taxing Warren, Preble, and Green County as well, because we've been paying for it for 52 years, and they're building campuses outside this county. And it's time for some fairness that all counties that get the benefit.
You'll be available for questions after the event if anybody wants to talk. Awesome. Thank you. Ready to transition to Part Two? Kick it back to David.
Thank you. We are now gonna introduce our next four candidates. Paul Bradley, Joelle Jones, Joe Lacy,
Okay. How was the green room? Fun? Yeah? Yeah, they all, so they, these candidates have been behind in the green room, so they have not heard our previous conversations. So I apologize if some of my questions sound redundant. You might have heard them twice. We want to make sure that candidates have the opportunity to respond to similar questions. They might not all be exactly the same, but we are gonna try to do as much repetition as possible. So with that, we're gonna get started with the group questions. And we ask again, as I mentioned before, that you try to keep your responses as concise as possible, so we can hear from as many folks as possible, keeping about 30 seconds. We found in the past group that folks tended to talk about one minute, which really only allows you to each speak once. So if you keep them to 30 seconds, then you, as a group, will have more opportunities to engage with each other. So the first question comes from Up Dayton. It's the Up Dayton-sponsored question. Up Dayton seeks to spur economic growth in the Dayton region by attracting and retaining young creative talent, and wants to show young adults that the Gem City is a great place to live, work, and play. However, many young professionals are buying homes in the suburbs or sending their children to private or charter schools because they're concerned about the quality of Dayton Public Schools. What do you believe is the biggest reason for their fear of sending their children to Dayton Public Schools? And what can you, as an individual Board member, do to work towards reversing this trend? Who'd like to start?
I would say that I think the fear is underachieving, that the academic achievement is low in Dayton. And I think some, some young people might be afraid that their, their child is not, will not be prepared to face the future. But I want to assure you that I and my team will work hard. We're stressing academic achievement over athletics. We know how important it is for young people to have a quality education, and we seek to make that a possibility in Dayton Public Schools.
I would, I talk, I have a, a daughter that's in third grade, so I've been talking to a lot of parents, and I, I think a lot of it, it, it's just the impression of what the, the district offers. I think there's a lot of talk about, um, your child will be in a class that's not controlled, and there will be a lot of distractions, and your child won't get a chance to... and there will be a lot of distractions, and your child won't get a chance to, to learn. I think, I really also think that there are a lot of people that, they want, they want their child to be, to associate, and actually their families to associate with a certain, with a certain group. I mean, I went to Catholic school, and I understand that, and, and my parents hung out with other Catholics. I can, I can understand that also.
Hi, Joelle. So in regards to that question, I believe that the fears are real, and that perception is reality for those who think that. We know that Dayton Public Schools have great opportunity and some of the brightest minds in the region, and I will say this, and I've always said it, the Dayton Public Schools students are not failures. Our systems and our policies are failures. And that perception and that reality of our system and our policies bring about those thoughts where people decide not to put their kids in urban education. I think we have to be cognizant also of the fact that when you talk about Dayton Public Schools, you talk about urban. And so, we as human beings, sometimes we want all the frills and feels of urban, the nightlife, the baseball games. But the reality of putting our kids in school was some consider, who told me, an experiment they're not willing to take. But Dayton Public Schools, regardless of test scores, have shown through our graduates, who some are running for office right now, offer some of the most dynamic education that there can be, that we can offer for free. What can we do? We have to work as a team, the board, and the city, and community, to turn this school system around.
So, you know, I think there's been this whole movement here in Dayton about this live, work, play, you know, downtown Dayton partnership, people like Mike Irvin who have worked on, on developing this, this idea of, of making this a great place to live, like a great place to work, and also having those, those other activities around, around downtown too, like the kayaking and the ballpark and all those things. And you're seeing all this new housing come up that a lot of young professionals are, are interested in. But again, that key piece is that, is that live place. In that live place, you have to remember that when you talk to realtors, when realtors are talking about people wanting to move into a place, the number one thing that, that people care about, parents and future parents care about, are the quality of schools. And, and that quality of schools, you know, it, it is an image problem, but it is, it goes much deeper than that, too. You know, and I think that starts with our leadership at the top. It, it starts with our board, it starts with, with the type of message we're sending about the academic excellence that we can provide to kids in DPS. And I think until we get a board that's truly focused on working on that, that live piece of that live, work, play is never gonna fully be accomplished.
Let's dig into this a little bit more. So as we're talking about these perceptions, one of the things that's not a perception is, is our scores. So Dayton narrowly avoided a state takeover due to low test scores, and, and we're seeing that potentially come up again. So what specific actions would you take to improve test scores across the district to ensure local control of our schools?
Okay, so, that is true. But let's also talk about the reality of that. When Dayton Public Schools students start to master a test, and they start to make great progress, this test changes. So when we talk about that, let's talk about it in totality. And when we talk about changing the perception and the test scores, we have to do, we have to allow teachers to do what they do best, and that is teach. Teachers should be a part of the decision-making from the sixth floor, where the superintendent's office is, to the first floor, where the janitor's office is. Everything that the board and administration does should be to support teachers. They know how to teach. They know how to turn our test scores around, how to help our children teach, learn. But what happens most often, the teachers are subjected to policies, and then they have to fulfill those, but no one is asking them. So as a board member, what I propose in collaboration with other board members, is to make sure that teachers are part of the decision-making, intentional, purposeful part of the decision-making, that the board and administration implements policy to help them fulfill their goals.
Well, I mean, talking about people's perceptions, I, Joelle, I do disagree. I think there are some perceptions out there, and about school quality especially. Louis Troy is a very good school. Louis Troy has been very successful, and it's all, and it's been in our top 10 for some time now. But Louis Troy, it's, I, they just have, they can't fill the building. The building is, is our closest school to DeSoto Bass of projects in Dayton. And so, I think because it is right there, the perceptions create the problems of our schools. Yes, we do have to work on quality, and, and yeah, I do work on quality. But I, I just was carrying on the conversation about perceptions.
Just wanna make sure that we're focusing specifically on test scores, because regardless of perceptions, the state will take over if we continue to fail these test scores. So if folks could respond to that.
Okay.
I, I wanna say that I think it's critical for a school board member, and my team, we're looking at parental engagement. It's critical that our parents are engaged in the lives of their young people, and we're talking about improving those third-grade reading levels. We want to make sure that, and stress the importance of education for our young people. And our parents are the first responders. Our parents are the ones that have to get our kids to school and prepare, and give our teachers the resources that they need in order to prepare the students for the test. We gotta look behind the issues. It's not just, some of our, some of our young people apparently, they are stressed out about tests. So we need to look at the, the, the situation behind. Some of our kids come to school, they don't have food, adequate food, so they can't concentrate. So there are a lot of issues that are faced. However, that, that 607 mark is horrible, and we need to do everything we can to raise that level of academic achievement, and our team is looking forward to doing just that.
I wanna get Paul in before we go again.
So I think when you're talking about test scores, right, there's two things you can, you can talk about. Obviously, it is unfair that the way they, they change these test standards every year, and, and the way that teachers have to teach to test is difficult, especially when you're working in, in environments like our schools are. And I think there's two things you can do about that. You can either complain about it and say it's not fair, or you can advocate, and that's what our board should be doing. Our board should be talking to Peggy Laner, to Fred Strathorne, and saying, you know, getting them into our schools, understanding the realities of, of what our teachers are facing, what our schools are facing. And, you know, as far as what you can do about those scores, I think that's the other big piece, too, is, I think it's starting early with early childhood education, stronger practices early on, emphasizing reading, because if you cannot read, you cannot succeed in other, other, other categories either. You know, whether it's reading your math textbook or your history textbook, reading and emphasizing academic excellence as the key to success. Those are the ways that we move the needle, I think, as far as, you know, larger, larger picture of things, as far as moving the needle and, and making sure that our kids can pass these tests that we know that they have to pass. You know, it's, it's not like these, these tests are going anywhere. The OTTs and these things like that, they're here to stay. So we need to, we need to understand those realities, and we need to prepare our kids as best we can for those realities, too.
Thank you. And again, just wanna make sure, if we keep our, our responses more concise, then we can hear from multiple. It's everyone, it's okay. It's the same group before. And again, this is really up to you all. So if you wanna just have yours done, you can have yours done, but if we wanna show the, show the audience how you're able to engage with each other, then shorter responses and more concise responses allowed for more dialogue.
You guys have a question?
I'm sorry?
No questions then? No dialogue between?
Within the five-minute constraints. We're gonna move on to another question, but you're more than welcome to engage with each other in that way, and, and entirely encouraged. So, another question, let's, let's talk about teachers and teacher salary, which is something that's consistently come up throughout this election. So according to a 2016 Dayton Daily News reporting of the 45 local districts, Dayton ranked 14th in starting salary for teachers, around 30th after 10 years, and 39th for veteran teachers at the very top of the scale. Additionally, our teachers have worked with limited raises for the past four years, and frozen step raises were not restored as they were in some others' districts, perpetuating a pay gap for veteran teachers. How will you help attract and retain high-quality teachers if they're expected to work in a more challenging district for less pay than their peers?
Okay, so go ahead. As a board member, we're charged with two things. That is to hire the superintendent, and to hire the treasurer, and to help guide and implement policy. And I hate to say "I, I, I," but as a board, I will hope that we can work together to do the same things that businesses do. When businesses come into the city, we, we attract businesses, we give them incentives, tax incentives, all costs, all kinds of things of that nature. Our teachers are our most valuable asset. Why don't we use some of those innovative policies and challenges, and some of those innovative policies to help overcome some of these challenges? If we want to attract teachers into a challenging environment, we understand that, but what are we doing to do that? How come we're not working with our business, with our Chamber of Commerce, and our area Board of Realtors, to say, hey, we may not be able to offer you this salary at this particular year, but we can offset your water, or we can offset your property taxes? These are things that have been done all throughout the country. They're not rocket science. The same way that we value businesses coming to our community, and we attract and retain on some of the same ways we need to attract and retain our teachers, that's what I think, and I hope that the board would want to work in that effort.
And I apologize, I'm gonna add one bit to that question, which you responded to as well. One of the questions that we got from Social QA builds on this, and I just wanna use this specific language, it says, "I'm a young teacher, convince me that I can build a successful long career at DPS," which is again, connected to the previous question. So responses from the rest of the group?
I would say yes. I think we are trying to attract young teachers and retain teachers who have a lot, who have experience. As a board member, I've tried twice in the past six years to, to get a levy on the ballot. And then the last levy that I tried to get on the ballot, that was, that was pretty much denied by the same group that, that really is backing the slate. So I, that, I makes it difficult, I think, for them to put a levy on if they're, they're going against the same group of people. So I, so I do wonder about some of the things that we're gonna have to be battling with in the future, because we were battling with that. That, those, those levies that I put on the ballot, that would've helped raise money to pay teachers more. And the stats that you gave, that's before 3% raise over two years. But, yeah, I think we, we want to pay them more.
I think that the district needs to show that it values teachers, and you show that you value teachers by the pay scale. And I think that we need to create an environment of success, an environment where teachers feel comfortable in teaching, where they can see some successes, and that we need to, we need to show and do research, as well as do a campaign to value teachers, and, and get out there and, and recruit, like we do other areas, and maybe incentives are the key. So there are a lot of things that we can do, but the first thing we can do is to show this community how much we value teachers, and we do that by giving them a pay scale that's equivalent to their experience, as well as incentives to wanna, wanna stay in Dayton.
So I think, I think it's twofold, really. It's first, you know, we have to understand, again, the reality is that, that our, our school union, the DEA, just recently had a vote of no confidence, not just in the school board, but in the superintendent, and those are, those are big issues. So, those aren't things that a school union takes lightly, you know? And, and so when we are talking about our teachers being our front lines, being the people who are in our classrooms, directly affecting the outcomes of our kids, we have to understand that we, we cannot have a board who's in opposition to the work that they're doing. And so I think that's the first thing that we have to do, is create an environment where we, we show our teachers, we prove to our teachers that they're valued, and that we understand that we're on the same team, that we're working towards the same goals that they are. That's number one. I think number two, obviously, we have to talk about, you know, the pay. And, and when you talk about a district where you have some of the more, more challenge, bigger challenges than, say, in Oakwood, you know? I, I think you have to understand, again, that our teachers can go to other districts, and they can get paid more, and that's, you know, that's, that's the unfortunate, again, reality that we live in. But I think we have to talk about, you know, when you have a, a, a board that no one, no one believes in, and you have a district that is being led by that board, it's hard to talk about a levy, though. I, I just think that's the reality. So I think we have to change that perception, we have to change that, that air of disagreement within, within the school district before you can even start talking about a levy.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we are gonna start talking about a levy. Because this is something that Joe has mentioned, because this is a huge issue that will likely come up over the next few years if you're elected to the board, voters deserve to know where you stand on that levy. So Joe already started with saying that you advocated for one in the past, and you believe that there should be one potentially moving forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would love to hear from other candidates where you stand on that.
At this point, I think eventually we will need a levy, but right now, I don't think that our city and our community will fund a levy at this point, the way we are in Dayton Public Schools in terms of, you know, the grading scale. We've got to show some successes. We've got to generate some enthusiasm and excitement about education. We've got to show this district that we can work together, and I'm so happy to be on a team that has already decided, we have a vision, we have a plan, and we're gonna work together. We're working on a 10-year plan to make Dayton Public Schools the way it should be. And so, when you have successes, you can then ask the community to give some money back, but right now, I don't see it happening.
I, I have a question. I'm really baffled by this 10-year plan thing. 10 years? What board meetings do you attend?
It's called vision.
What board meetings have you ever attended? How many schools have you ever been involved with? And who have you spoken to about a 10-year plan? And that's one of the problems here. How can four people, or three people, or two people plan for an entire district in isolation of the rest of the district? That is absolutely the problem with Dayton Public Schools now. This has to be a community issue. This is a community issue. How dare you plan for my child without involving me? I don't know what the plan is. I haven't seen it. Well, you're talking about it. Please let me see. We have to, we, we have to rebuild the reputation Dayton Public Schools. We have to turn the schools around together. The schools didn't become a failure by themselves, they're not gonna turn around by themselves. And when we talk about 10-year plans, I'm gonna hurry this up, we have to be more flexible than 10 years. We have to have plans that we evaluate, monitor, and determine whether or not we need to go forth or throw that in trash.
Joelle, could you speak specifically to the...
Yes, the I am in support of a levy, because it, to the state of Ohio, changes the funding system for public schools, that is our only alternative.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
You know, I think when we're talking about a levy, and we're talking about 10-year plans, and we're talking about, you know, how you do that in isolation, I don't think you do it in isolation. I don't think we've ever mentioned trying to do that in isolation, and that's why...
Since you have a 10-year plan.
And that's why, when you're developing a plan, you have to be flexible, you have to bring in partners, you have to be working with the Chamber of Commerce, you have to be working with your labor unions, you have to be working with your faith-based organizations, you have to be working with your community organizations. And that's why we've gone out and we've been endorsed by all those organizations, and been working with those organizations, because we know, when it comes to building a plan, when it comes to building the future of this district, when it comes to start talking about a levy, it's gonna take all of those partners to get those things done. And yes, you have to create a vision, and I think you do need to create a vision that's long-term, and you have to understand that that thing needs to be flexible, and that challenges are gonna arise that you can't predict and that you have to be able to adapt to. And I think that's part of that vision and part of that planning process, that's collaborative, that's going out to your schools, holding town halls, talking to community leaders, talking to parents, but talking to the business leaders, talking to the city officials. It's, it's all those type of things that, that I believe our, our slate is doing right now, and it is trying to engage on, and...
Paul, I apologize. Did you say where you are on the levy?
I, I don't know if I did, Rob, but I'll tell you right now.
I'm genuinely asking, right?
I, I would be in favor of a levy as long as we were working with those partners.
Okay, thank you. And, and Joe, I know that you previously talked about the levy, would you like to say it at all?
Yeah, sure. I mean, yeah, we, and to, and, yeah, in the last, last time we considered a levy, we did talk to those people. And they say, oh, no, Dayton Public Schools, it's not your turn, it's the city's turn now. You gotta wait for somebody else. And they said that four years prior to that. People say, oh, it's somebody else's turn. Okay, it's Dayton Public Schools' turn now, and I think we need to get our turn. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let's transition. We're gonna go to another sponsored question. This is sponsored by the YWCA, which is one of our cosponsors for the evening. According to DPS disciplinary data, 102 children in grades K through 3 were suspended from school in just the first quarter of the 2016-2017 school year. We also know that at DPS, students of color are suspended at a disproportionate rate compared to other students. Experts say that no research indicates that elementary suspensions improve a child's behavior or make school safer, but many studies have shown that suspended students are more prone to avoiding school, having lower grades, and ultimately dropping out of school, which limits their career prospects and can lead to a lifetime of poverty. Discipline that pushes kids out of school can also result in mistrust of adults and an increased risk of being involved with the juvenile justice system. As a prospective school board member, what do you think about the DPS disciplinary policy that has resulted in the suspension of children under the age of 10? And would you change about, excuse me, and what would you change about this policy, if anything? We're gonna start with William.
Well, I think that it's very discouraging to hear that data, that DPS has decided to suspend and expel our young people. They need to be in school. We need to find creative ways to deal with individuals that have disciplinary issues. And we need to find ways to have them in school and have their grandparents engage, as well as just techniques to deal. We need training, evidently. And we need to look at the landscape. And it's unfortunate that, that African-American males, just fortunately, are, are suspended. That, that's got to stop. We need to find creative ways, and our team is looking at that. We're very much concerned about expulsion. If you're not in school, you can't produce, and, and as you said, there's so much negativity attached to expulsion.
So it's unfortunate, are there any specific things that you would change to that policy?
Absolutely. I would change, I would, I would look at, I don't know the specific policy, but I don't agree with expel, expulsion at all.
Expulsion of any students, or of K through three students?
Well, kids through three. You have to look at each, each individual situation, I think.
Okay, others?
Um, okay, yeah, as a parent, I do see, I, I would not, I would not tie a teacher's hand. I think in some, in some cases, I, I, I think those stats, while very disconcerting, I think there are probably some cases within those stats where there are teachers that are trying to get a hold of those, those children's parents, really, and they're having difficulty getting a hold of those children's parents. And this is a last resort, saying, you won't return my calls, this is me trying to get a hold of you. Your children, your child has to go home. Yes, we need to use more in-school suspension and, and, to, to deal with, with the problem. But I don't want to tie a teacher's hands in these cases, thank you.
Uh, we talked, you guys both used the word disconcerting, fortunate regarding the tremendous amount of students, specifically African-American males, but any student of that, that being suspended. I disagree with that term, I think it's criminal, and I stand by that. As a former teacher at Dayton Public Schools, as a former administrator, I wrote the restorative justice grant for the district. I helped guide the implementation of restorative justice for the district. Unfortunately, the district did not implement it or keep it in its purest form. Restorative justice allows the victim and the victimizer, the teacher and the whole entire community to design solutions and to heal from behaviors in school. We don't want to tie teachers, and we know we have some rascals. We know we have some rascals. But we have to deal with them appropriately, because what we're doing is, we're not just crafting a vision for education, we're crafting a vision for life. And we all heard of the prisoner pipeline, uh, track, and that's exactly what it is. And also, we have to, school to prisoner, thank you so much, Jim Lacy, school to prisoner pipeline, but we also have to make sure that our teachers, black and white, understand our children culturally. And I think we cannot have that discussion about discipline without talking about that.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so this is a, a pretty straightforward issue for me, I'm, I'm opposed to this policy. I, I don't think that, that our kids benefit from being suspended in those early stages of, of education. In, in no way, as you quoted all, all the data, nothing shows that that is, helps performance, that it helps behavior. It, it doesn't show that it does anything positive for the student. And I think, again, every decision a board makes, every, every policy a board makes, every action a board takes has to be with keeping in mind that, that the outcomes and the, and, and the successes of our kids are our top priority. And I think there's a lot of ways you can, you can address that with, with different, you know, trauma-informed care, and, and improving education, mindfulness, restorative justice. I think there's connecting with parents, there's a lot of ways that you can start addressing that without punitively damaging that kid's future.
I'd like to dig into this a little bit deeper and actually bring up one of those other ways of addressing this. So according to the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio's new report, the state of Black Dayton, over the last three school years, African-American males have accounted for roughly half of all suspensions, while only representing a third of the student population. Between 2014 and 2016, district students were most often suspended for one subjective infraction, disruptive, and disobedient behaviors. Overwhelmingly, black males were suspended for this and other culturally-based infractions. At the town hall meeting discussing this report last week, implicit bias was raised as a concern that must be addressed. Do you agree, and what steps, if any, do you believe DPS should take to reduce the number of suspensions and close the discipline gap?
Absolutely. And, so we're, we're talking about implicit bias here. I think that, you know, that's something that we've, we know about, we know affects people's decision-making, whether they know it or not, I mean, that's the whole, whole concept, right? And, and I think you can look at research that's been done on this topic, you know, Hillary Clinton talked about it with, with police forces and the type of training that you can, you can be involved with to actually help move the needle, I think, in, in the right direction there. But the key is, is, is proper training and follow-up. And if you don't do those two, two things, and I don't think you're gonna move the needle on, on implicit bias. I think the other thing is understanding, again, as I, I think one of, one of my colleagues here talked about is, is we have a lot of teachers who don't understand their district, their classrooms, the, the, the background from which a lot of our kids are, and the families that are, you know, in the, in the communities our, our kids are coming from, and, and teaching them about that, getting them to have a better appreciation and understanding of the day-to-day things that our kids are facing. I think that's the other way that you can help train out some of that implicit bias. But I think the first piece is, is being aware that it's real, and being aware that, that whether you, you feel it or not, that, that it's there. And, and our teachers, I think, are, are, are good people who, who care about their kids, and all of us, I think, are, that are here today are, are probably good people who care about our future, the future of our school district. But, you know, it's being aware of that implicit bias, first of all.
Uh, yeah, I, I completely agree, the training for implicit bias, I mean, training so that people's implicit biases do not affect their decisions. That's, that's what needs to be done. So I do agree with Paul, that, that training is the answer.
Just to clarify for both of you, is it training teachers, training administrators, training parents, training staff? Who are we training?
I think it's, it's all of the above, and specifically teachers, but administrators as well, too, I think is key. And, you know, I think that, that training, you know, we talk about training for, for our administrators, we talk about training for our, our teachers all the time, we never talk about training for our parents. Offering those resources, I think, is a great idea. And training for our board, too, I think, starting at the top doesn't hurt either.
Thank you. And, and Joe, what did, is it just teachers?
It is, it is teachers, and, but there are administrators, especially like the, the assistant principals that deal directly with discipline issues.
Thank you. Joel?
We talked about training, Dayton Public Schools had a lot of training. We've spent, as a district, hundreds of thousands of dollars in positive school climate, cultural involvement, uh, training. We've had people come in from all across, from east and west coast, to train our teachers and our community on implicit bias and things of that nature. One of the things I think we have to stop, and we do it here intentionally or unintentionally, we keep talking about the issues that kids have. Every student from the east side or west side doesn't come with post-traumatic stress disorder. Every student from, and, and the great majority of them do not come from broken backgrounds. They have parents who work two jobs, maybe as a home health aide and work at Burger King or Walmart. So that's the reason why the parent's not there. We gotta talk about teacher, parent participation, parent participation comes in many forms. So when you talk about implicit bias, I think we have to talk about that honestly. You know, what exactly do our teachers, black or white, feel about our students? And be cognizant of that, and have an honest discussion. We talked about that with the Dayton Dialogue on Race years ago. We need to have those same conversations in the school district, and we need to make it a safe conversation. We need to allow teachers to feel the way they feel and talk about it. Because that's the only way we're gonna handle this. We're not gonna change who we are and how, who we are as students, and who we are as teachers. But what we can do is bring about ideas and policies that, that allow poor white kids and poor black kids to be seen as a positive light. And just real quick, poverty does not mean bad, poverty does not mean stupid, poverty does not mean that you have low test scores, poverty means that you're poor. And it's different between experiencing poverty and living it.
So to clarify, are you saying less focus on training and more focus on facilitating safe conversations to talk about these issues?
Exactly. That's what education's about.
Okay.
Education's about strategy, created to creatively, uh, if I can say the word, creativity. And allowing people to have those real conversations, allowing teachers to do that.
Thank you. William?
Well, I think that what our stu- school district is experiencing is a microcosm of what's going on in our nation, particularly in our city as well. In Dayton, as we look at our police department, we see it's overwhelmingly white, and we live in a predominantly black community. And so we face these issues, but I think training is critical. I think our teachers need sensitivity training, along with administrators. We need to engage our parents and community. I think we need to look at why that, that data is taking place and look behind it, and then do some evaluation as to, we got to have some hope and belief in our young people. Instead of suspending them and disciplining them, we got to believe that they can achieve. And I, I think that's critical, to have that hope, no matter what environment you come for, no matter what geographical area you live in, or what, what your income is, you got to believe that all students deserve a quality education and treat them as a human being.
Okay, so going back to children being treated as human beings and recognizing the environments that they might be faced with at home, bringing it to the classroom, I want to talk a little bit about trauma. So conversations about accountability tend to center on how teachers and districts can improve test scores and graduation rates, as we started with this conversation, despite the relationship between academic achievement and strong mental and physical health support systems. As such, accountability discussions do not often address our responsibility to ensure the emotional and psychological well-being of our students. What would you do to facilitate a more holistic notion of accountability that would meet the needs of students who have experienced or are experiencing trauma?
Uh, in Dayton Public Schools, one of the things that we have done, and I say "we" because I'm part of Dayton Public Schools, we have mental health counselors. But one of the things I want to do, I, I would hope that all the board members want to do, is the intentional, purposeful staffing of the Office of Family and Community Engagement. That office is the first line of defense for the school district, and it's the first line of information for families and students. And those, that office needs to have purposeful relationships with mental health services. And that doesn't mean that we have a partnership on paper, but those services are not only available to the students, but to the parents. And then we need to also have our business partners a part of that office, the Dayton Chamber of Commerce, the Area Board of Villagers, all the mental health facilities, nonprofits. Again, this is a community issue, and it's gonna take a community to fix it. When you talk about accountability, we can't do it without safely and respectfully saying that the community has to be part of that solution.
Thank you. Others on trauma?
Yes, we, we need mental health professionals in place, and we need to look out in our community and find those individuals, be it counselors, to, to help our young people, to help our parents. So we, uh, we have looked at that, speaking of vision, we have looked at that idea, and we, we are, we are serious about putting in place individuals that can help our students in terms of mental health.
Well, what about the ones who are already there? Because we have mental health facilities, counselors in schools already. Remember yours?
Others?
We need to make, we need, we need to make social services available to all our students in all our schools, yeah. And we, and, we do try to do that to the best of our ability, but, yeah, to the best of our ability, we need to make that available to service any child that's in trauma, yeah.
So we should be doing it, is, do you have any specifics on things we should be doing more so, or?
I mean, children, the, other than referring children to the, to the proper social services and psychological services, I think they need to be, they need to be referred to professional care, yeah, in those cases.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I think this is a great issue to talk about, and I think one of the things that we need to be exploring are, are true community schools. And right now, we have a few community schools, but they're not as engaged as, as we would like them to be in, you know, in a lot of cases, in most cases. And there's a lot of, a lot of community school models out there that you can look at, everywhere from New York to Tulsa to Cincinnati, just down the road, that are doing amazing, effective things, working in their communities. And one of the keys to that, when you talk about the social services we have already in our schools, you, you need, you need the person who's working directly with that student, understanding what's going on in that student's day-to-day lives. You know, you, you need the community services right there in the school, you need, you need care source, you need your, your, your doctors, you need your, your daycare, you need, you know, your ability to access WIC and all those other, other, other opportunities that our, our students, in some cases, need. And I think those are the type of models, and that's how you move the model, I mean, that's how you move the needle. I think that's, that's the type of community engagement that we need. It's working with our faith-based leaders, it's working with, with parent counselors who are engaged, who want to be involved. It's working with the resources that we already have in our schools, but it's providing a, a better wraparound each, in, each individual student that is struggling. Because again, it's not every student that's struggling, it's not every student that's facing trauma, but every single time that we can catch a kid who all of a sudden isn't going to school anymore, because, guess what, she just got pregnant, and you can provide them with the resources, the daycare opportunities, the, the health, and, and make sure that she knows where her, her child is gonna, to sleep. You know, when, when you can remove those barriers from people, from students, you can help them succeed, uh, and where in many cases they don't. And for me, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for, and I think our slate is a strong advocate for, community schools.
So let's, sorry, Joel.
But I, I think that's great, but we already have community schools in Dayton Public. Ruskin, Rivers Edge, Fairview, Stivers are great national models that need to be expanded upon, but we have to be, just have a real conversation about the wonderful things that we already have in Dayton Public.
And, you know, I, I think there are, you know, you talk about Ruskin, you talk about Rivers Edge, and you look at where, where some of these schools are located, and you look at the actual effectiveness of, of these schools and these models. And I think then you have to have a real discussion about what is actually successful, why aren't we doing these in other locations, and how can we have a greater impact in our community schools? Because I, you know, I don't think our, our community schools are as effective as they can be.
I think, I think one of, one of the critical things that we need to do-
I'm sorry, William, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up, but you can start with the next one. So we're going to transition this. So we're talking about, um, community schools and taking staff from other existing infrastructure in the community and leveraging that for the school. There's also a, a conversation around how we, how we leverage existing staffing resources that already exist within the school, the counselors that are already there, and whether or not there should be more. So this question digs into that a little bit more. Staffing remains one of the key issues left largely unresolved in the new DEA contract. Despite an increased focus on literacy in the district, most libraries still remain closed due to a lack of media specialists on DPS staff. With a large number of immigrant students in the district, there is a need for increased English as a second language, excuse me, for increased English as a second language teachers. And we still see a dearth of counselors in our district, particularly when we take into consideration the high levels of trauma many of our students experience on a regular basis. Given budgetary limitations and competing priorities the board must deal with, it will be quite difficult to address all of, three of these concerns simultaneously. Therefore, which of these three staffing priorities is most important to you as a candidate, and why? I can start with you, William.
Well, I, I think that it's critical that we have the resources that we need to help our, our citizens of Dayton. We have a lot of refugees here and second languages, we need library staff, we need, again, to increase that third grade reading level, we need counselors, we need other staff to help our young people achieve. And the only way we can do that is that we put the monies and the resources and the persons in place and hire those individuals to help our, our community. Our community is changing.
Of those three, though, which one would you select as your top priority?
Well, I think our, my top priority would be to engage that, that new community that we have, that second language, we got to make them-
ESL teachers?
Yes, that's critical.
Thank you. Others?
I need the three, so, it's counselors, ESL, and what?
Yeah, counselors, ESL, and, uh, media specialists.
Oh, well, I, for, all of them are equally important, but if we had to choose, I'm gonna talk about school counselors. School counselors are the linkage to academic success, social readiness for our students and the community. And we cannot move forward on anything until we have people who understand our children, who are there dedicated to work with them, their academic needs, their social needs, and things of that nature. They are paramount to success. They are paramount to success, they are the partners of the parents and they are the partners of the teachers. Uh if we had to choose, it would definitely be school counselors.
Thank you. Joel, Paul?
Okay, well, first off, I I do disagree once with the premise of your question is that these things are unresolved. We did, we, we did sign a contract and we did agree with the teachers' union, uh the they passed contracts, so that was an agreement on a two-year contract. So there was.
We are hearing increase, that these are still increased needs.
Okay, that, so the union is saying that, that, well, you're hearing that, that they are needs. They are needs, but, but to meet those needs, yeah, it would take away from actually certified teachers. These are not certified teachers that work directly with children, and we have a lot of demands on this district to meet academic needs. So um we do have ESL teachers, we have media specialists in the high schools, and having counselors, I understand, we, we have to, have, we have to have, have, we have to have counselors. We have those in the high schools right now, high schools, and I believe we have middle schools.
If you were.
I'd say if they're coming at the expense of a certified teacher, I have a daughter that, that, who has had, who's been taught by people who are not, who are not certified teachers and who's been taught by people who are certified teachers. And she got the, and I've seen real, I've seen real learning when she sits with a certified teacher. So I, I, if I am gonna have to get rid of a certified teacher so that I can have, have a media specialist, I don't really believe in that. And I understand that, that the teachers' union wants to hire these people and make them part of the teachers' union, yes, for every school. I understand that's a demand, but they also, but the other side is, is that comes at the, at the expense of certified teachers that, that I believe are some of the best things, that do the best things for people like my daughter.
So of those three, none of those are a top priority for you, certified teachers are a top priority and you would select one of those three?
I would select counselors if you want to select one of the three.
Okay, thank you. And Paul?
So I don't, and first of all, I don't think there's any argument that all three of these are, are absolute needs in our community and in our, in our schools. And, you know, I thought as you were asking this question, it'd be really easy for me to say librarians, but, you know, the more you think about this, and I think about my slate mates, and I think about Mohammed talking about that the impact his ESL teachers had on him and the fact that he didn't know how to read or speak English when he came here, and I talk, and Karen talks about, you know, the impact her counselors had on her and her future and her career, how successful she's been. They're all critical needs, they're all critical needs. Uh again, for me though, the library, the, the fact that libraries are, are sitting closed is criminal. I, I just, I, I can't even get past that notion in my mind that kids don't have access to that wealth of knowledge, the ability to, the, the ability to pick up those books and read. And to me, again, reading is, 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 is a big key to how we turn around and how we can be successful. And so I, I, I'd have to say librarians, but it's hard. So that's a hard question to answer.
Thank you. I worked really hard on them, so I'm glad. We're gonna transition to some individual questions and then after that, we'll, we'll turn this into closing statements because we are running a little behind. Um so we'll start with you, Joe. Uh according to Dayton Daily News reporting, you've downplayed the significance of the DA, the DEA's vote of no confidence in the superintendent. As the only incumbent, what knowledge about her performance and your evaluations of her can you point to as reasons why the teachers' concerns should not be taken seriously or are areas where you and your fellow board members have increased her level of accountability?
I think it was, I think, well, it was explained to us actually by the, by the head of the, the teachers' union, that it was pretty much done unexpectedly and it wasn't really even discussed by the teachers' union when they voted on it. I, to me, it really sounds like something that was done out of anger. There was, it was a very long, um, it was a long negotiations and there's gonna be some anger um from, from all the, from, from a long teachers' negotiation. So with what accountability do we have, we have complete, we have accountability over our superintendent?
Are there any specific measures that you want to draw attention to for the audience or for voters?
I mean, we've asked her to, for specific performance and I don't have the evaluation in front of me, but yeah, we've asked for specific performance and she needs to meet that specific performance. And a lot of it is, it, it, it centers on improvement of academic performance.
Okay, thank you. Uh Paul, you've criticized the board's adoption of the 1.0 GPA minimum for student athletes, stating the district must emphasize education as the key to success, not athletic ability. What is your response to those who argue that this policy incentivizes students to improve their grades in order to continue doing something they enjoy and could keep students interested in school who would otherwise just drop out?
You know, I, I absolutely understand that argument because that's, that's what they're, they're telling us when they talk about this, this uh, this policy change. And they talk about how it's only a handful of kids in each school. And uh you know what, that, i- if, if that's true, if, if we're talking about a handful of kids in each school, then to me, a better solution than reducing the expectations on all our kids is reaching out and having meaningful interactions with those kids and understanding what's going on, why, why are they going from a 2.0 where they could conceivably play to something less than that? And honestly, to me, this goes, this goes beyond just that, that, that playing sports in schools. And I, I love playing sports in schools. I, I, believe it or not, with my size, I played football in high school. And uh, thank you Mohammed for that laugh. Uh and, and I, I thought I was gonna be the next Peyton Manning for the Colts and, and my parents were, were wise enough to understand that that wasn't gonna be the case. And they expected academic excellence from me to play sports. And I, I know that that is the key to my success, that's why I'm able to sit, sit up here today. I'm still waiting on the Colts to call, probably not gonna happen, but I have a successful career because of that education. And to me, again, we need to be setting a, a bar for our kids that is, is, is academic excellence, that they should strive for. We should not be telling them that 1.0 is good enough, that we think that that is as good as they can accomplish and still play sports. That's unacceptable. That message to me, when you're talking about every single kid in school, every single kid that's getting a 2.0 and striving to get a 2.0 to play sports, to, to lower that bar on them, again, I think is criminal. I, I, I just, I, I just think that expectation has to be set higher, that we have to tell our kids that we believe you can do well, that we know that you are smart, that we know that you can succeed academically, and that we know that's the key to your success post-graduation. Until we prove that to them, that we believe that, they're not gonna believe it themselves. And to me, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm very critical of that, that policy decision.
Thank you. William, you've identified truancy as the biggest obstacle standing in the way of DPS educating students better and graduating more students. What innovative solutions do you propose that will keep students in the classroom within existing budget, budgeting parameters? Or are you proposing additional funding? And if so, where does that funding come from?
Well, I think that it, that it is critical to have our young people in, in class. Truancy is a serious issue and if they are not in the classroom, then they can't achieve and they can't graduate on time. They can't receive the academic nurture that they need if they're not in school. So I believe that there needs to be a comprehensive uh program citywide where we engage parents, we engage role models, we engage professionals, we use every tool we can to let our young people know how critical and important it is for them to be in school. And we need to put our money and our talk into that program so that our young people will graduate and be successful.
How do you plan on keeping them in the classroom?
Well, I think for number one, you've got to, you've got to engage the parents. And uh we've got to get away from this emphasis of uh, you know, you can stay home. You need to make sure, and I think faith-based initiatives need to be in place, role models, church business, we need to make sure that they're in school. And we need to engage the community and make sure that happens.
Do you have any specific proposals for how you're engaging the community?
Well, again, we need to uh have that conversation. It needs to be citywide, it needs to be from the talk, from our superintendent, from our administration, from our teachers, from our role models, from our faith-based initiative, from our business community. That's how we do it. We show them how critical it is. And we show the negative side because it's a pipeline to prison.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Joel. When asked how to attract high-quality teachers, administrators, and other staff, you spoke to DPS's need to be flexible and have a clear-cut vision as to where the district would like to go one year at a time. Many teachers have reported frustration, feeling that they're always in year one or two of some plan and that these plans are often scrapped before results could be reasonably expected. How will you balance the need for flexibility while addressing teachers' need for consistency, consistency and stability in their classroom without year-to-year changes?
Okay, so a year, um, a plan for the district does not mean a year-to-year plan for teachers. And what I said earlier, what I stick by and what I believe is that teachers need to be a part of the decision-making process, again, from the sixth floor to the first floor where the janitor's office is. And so teachers know how to teach, we know that, correct? They know how to turn test scores around, they know how to meet the needs of the students who are having trouble uh understanding or comprehending. Teachers need to design the policies that they need to help turn Dayton Public Schools' students around. What we should do as board members and as administrators is search, research, and find policies and guidelines to support them. The teachers, what is happening now is the decision comes from the top and then the teachers, and I was part of that, teachers are subjected to that, without, a lot of times without fair input. So the teachers are making the decisions and then we as administrators, board members, we design the policy support, to support them. Whatever they need and the decisions that they make, that's our job, to put policy in place to support that. So we talk about flexibility, I understand um the, I understand the path for the district. We use one curriculum and then we throw it away. We use these computers, then we throw it away. And so the teachers are jumping back and forth and they don't know which way to go. But when we let teachers do what they do best, teach, and we do what we do best, govern, then perhaps we can make some changes that we really need to go forward with Dayton Public Schools. Was that specific enough? Okay.
So we're gonna transition into closing statements, but I ask that you all take this question into consideration with your closing statement and include it in your closing statement. We've heard many values come up throughout this election, including flexibility, innovation, equity, frugality, professionalism, respect, et cetera. What are the top three values you will use to guide your work on the school board? So as you have your two minutes.
We're gonna pick one of those.
You have, you have three, um, and you don't have to pick from those, those are just examples. So whatever three values you think govern your work on the school board, please include those in your closing statement. Let's start with you, Joe.
Okay. Well, I only got one of them. Independence, okay. Uh you gave him the academic eligibility question, I'm sorry, I'm pointing to Paul and that's not polite. But I was the lone vote um when academic eligibility came up before the board and I, I was the lone no vote. No one else came even before the board to speak against it. I, I, so I think that, that brings, that shows my independence, it shows some leadership, there's another value we'll work on. And it, it, and that's not the only time, um, when the district, when, when the board voted to close Wright Brothers, at the time, it was our most successful elementary school academically, our most successful school. They closed, they closed it two years ago, I was the lone no vote. When the AD instructed uh students to cheat or throw a game, I was the lone vote on, the lone no vote on the extensionist contract. I was the lone no vote on uh tearing down Roosevelt, but, and the list goes on. I think that shows some independence and that's what I bring to the board, thank you.
You have a short time, any other values you wanna throw in there?
Um, I'd have to get that list again, probably.
You're okay.
No, thanks.
Thank you so much. William?
I think the most important value that I bring and will bring to the board is competence, love, consistency, trust.
You only get three.
Sorry.
I'm not gonna take love out.
But I think, I think it's critical that we believe in our young people, that we believe that our young people deserve the best and they can achieve, that we have hope, and that we strive to do what we can by being visible, by being engaged, by showing them, by being approachable, by being a listener, by engaging their parents, by working hard in the community, being visible, not just saying in the ivory tower, but be engaged, be in the classroom, talk to teachers, talk to principals, listen, and work hard. And that's what we're gonna do as a team and that's what I want you to know. I'm invested in this community. It's in my best interest, it's in your best interest that our kids succeed because our community is better when our kids achieve. And so I want you to know that I'm invested, I love our kids and I believe they can succeed, and I ask for your vote on November the seventh, the slate. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Hi, thank you guys for coming out this evening and spending it with us and listening to what we've said for the past few weeks. I am Joel Jones, I'm a candidate for Dayton City School Board and I run it because, again, like I said, I don't believe that Dayton Public Schools students are failures, our systems are failures, our policies are failures, and that we as a community have been dare look at our duty to oversee and to build true purposeful collaborations for our students. As we build this city and as the city is on the rebound, a cusp of an economic rebound, the travesty would be that our students are not prepared to take advantage of that. As a school board member, I'm running because these are my babies. I worship with them, I live with them, I eat what they eat, I know their parents. This is truly personal for me. This is, unfortunately, I have to use the vehicle of politics to be an impact on students. But when you talk about values, competency is important. But what's even more important, that you know your students. How can you lead people from someplace you've never been? I, I, I'm perplexed by that. It's not to say you don't care, but how can you lead students from a place you've never been to a board meeting, to a classroom? This is about the future of our children. Unfortunately, it's political. But I would use co, the values I treasure most are competency, respect, and true collaboration. It would have been easy for me to get two or three people who believe like I believe. The art, the magic of that is being willing to collaborate and work with people who have different experiences, different values, and coming together to turn something that means some, so much to each and every last one of us. Dayton Public Schools affects each and every last one of you, the success and/or the failure of them. I'm Joel Jones, I'm running by myself and I ask for your vote November seventh.
Thank you. And lastly, Paul?
So again, thank you everybody for, for coming out here today. Just being here shows that you're engaged and that you care about this issue and that's, that's really important for us as we move forward as, as a, as a school district to have people who are engaged. Uh you know, if, if I'm breaking it down to, to three words, really hastily put together, I, I think I'd look at uh, at collaboration as, as a big key to that and I think that's, and that goes hand in hand with, this isn't one of my words, but it goes with collaboration, it is leadership. And true leaders don't just show you what they believe, but they help move the needle with others in that direction. And I think that's, that's a big piece of what we need to do, we need to collaborate. As people have talked about, we need to collaborate with our city, with our business leaders, with our faith-based, faith-based leaders, with our social services. Those are the people, and, and, yes, we're working as a team and as a slate, and, and part of that work is, is, is engaging those, those individuals right now. And that's why we've been endorsed by Nan Whaley, by Fred Strayhorn, by the IUECWA, by the UFCW, by the Dayton Board of Realtors, by the Teachers Association. Those things, those things are important to me and those things matter. I gotta move quickly through these other two, two issues. Professionalism, I think, is, is another big, big issue, you know, when we're talking about a board. You need to be professional, you need to show up and understand what the issues are going on day-to-day in your school. It's not that you micromanage because that is how I think we get in trouble a lot of times, is a board that micromanages. But you have to have a board that's engaged, that's willing to work together, and, and the last thing I'd say is academic excellence. And to me, that's keeping in mind that every action and every decision you make needs to be made with an idea and the thought of how does this affect student outcomes, safety, and performance in the classroom, you know? And, and, and again, I, I, I'm proud to work on this slate, I'm proud of this team and, and everyone here else, everyone else here has asked you to, for, for one vote and I'm gonna ask you for four, I'm gonna ask you for all four of your votes for our team because I'm proud of, I'm proud to work with these people, I'm proud of the diversity and the strengths that we all bring to the table, and I'm proud of, of, of our vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, that's, I don't know if that's for us.
Attention please.
Oh, we're good, we're good, don't worry. So, don't worry, that's not for us, but it is also perfect timing. So time is up, thank you so much. Uh please give all the candidates the floor there on the stage. Because he has another mic and I assume he'll tell you, you what's next.
All right, you four, you are welcome to take a stage now. Thank you so much. Let's give all eight of our candidates a round of applause. And then Atana, before you leave, we want to thank you as well. Uh can we give another round of applause to Atana? And uh to thank Atana, we are gonna ask that you all go and support Gen City Co-op by getting a membership?
Yeah!
All right, again, we want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, this was a wonderful event and we enjoyed hearing from all eight of our candidates. we enjoyed hearing from all eight of our candidates. We do ask you if you're interested in joining us, we're going to be over at Lock 27 for the after-party, that's going to be at 329 East First Street, right next to Fifth Third Field. Since we didn't get to all of our questions tonight, we are going to be sending out the top five questions on Social QA, so if you're interested, you can go and vote up any questions that you liked or didn't see answered, and so we'll be sending those out to all eight candidates, and once we receive answers back, we'll be sharing that on our Facebook page and our Instagram and Twitter, and then our websites. You can find all that info under Updaten.org or social media under Updaten, any of those three. I believe that's it, so thank you for coming out and enjoying.